Did anyone like to rainbow them?
I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Pelham City Schools Board of Education. You all, again, rise for me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item tonight is going to be a public hearing on contract reopeners of California School Employees Association. Public hearing will be conducted regarding contract reopener proposals for the 2014-2015 school year received from CSDA Chapter 212. Do we call it 212?
212 was fine.
212, correct. And the Pelham City School District. So I will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, please rise. Seeing no one rise?
I just want to say, I'm so looking forward to actually being able to get a raise. It's hard to imagine what it's like. I'm really looking forward to it.
I said, rise.
Did you look? Did you read?
Anybody else? All right, we'll close the year. We know it's kids. Do I have to approve of the agenda? I understand that there were some potential change.
I wanted to hold, uh, under Educational Services, item N1.
N1, after-school safety and enrichment?
Yep.
Okay, we will take that off of the consent and put it on as a hold item if I would get a motion on it. Those in favor of making that change to the agenda? Aye. Aye. Close. The agenda is so changed. All right, this is the third meeting in a row that I make this, uh, sort of excuse. We've just moved over to electronic agenda and electronic, uh, everything. I've got really fat fingers and I sometimes have to scroll awkwardly, so we're quickly in. Hopefully I'll get this down pretty quickly. We're going to move on to the best part of the meeting. No, excuse me, the second best part of the meeting. Approval of minutes of, uh, January 14th. I believe everybody is here soon. For the January 14th, everyone is eligible to take a motion?
I have a motion, but there was just a type of, um, when it pulls items from consent to hold, it does need to be changed from consent to...
All right, well, let's take a motion in a second, then we'll pick.
No, with that, that's fine. Motioning.
Okay, uh, do you want to tell us which part of the...
Yeah, the consent items that we had held on the, on the minutes show still as consent.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that was the only difference. It was just a type of...
Okay, so we'll call that a motion?
Second.
All those in favor of the minutes as amended? Aye? Aye. Close. And now to the favorite, best part of the meeting, which is the presentation of Students of the Month for January 2014. I believe we have one holdover from December. Is that correct, Sam?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the way that this works is that I'll call up the student representatives from the four, uh, the middle school and the two high schools, and you'll come up and then you will introduce, you guys don't know how this works, but I'll explain to everybody else. You'll introduce the student and the student will awkwardly stand right here in front of the camera and be embarrassed, and it'll be great fun for all of us. So, let's start with Pelham City High School. So can I have the student representative from Pelham City High School? You know, while I have this opportunity, if I could remind you all to turn the cell phones to vibrate? Please, I appreciate it, probably that's not... And did you hear one of those in a basketball game today?
Oh, yeah.
Who started?
Pelham City Junior High School selected Mia Periani as the January Student of the Month. A well-rounded, intelligent, and excellent student, Mia Periani is Pelham City Junior High School's Student of the Month for January 2014. Her teachers agree that Mia is gracious, responsible, and always gives the highest level of effort both in class and on homework. She is highly motivated and figures out complex tasks on her own. Mia's teachers appreciate her patience and generosity with other students. She is a wonderful classmate who does more than her share on team assignments. She is kind, cooperative, and is well-liberated and respected by her peers. Mia's success this past year and a half has been impressive. She has earned Gold Renaissance Awards and mentorship the past three semesters on the Principal's Honor Role for maintaining a 4.0 GPA. Mia continues to challenge herself this year by taking Algebra I, Advanced English, and Spanish 1B as part of a rigorous eighth-grade curriculum. She has balanced her academics with participation these two years on the PJHS Girls Basketball Team. Mia also looks back affectionately on her last few years at Grant Elementary School, where she spent time mentoring younger students in their buddy program. A well-rounded person, Mia keeps herself busy outside of school, too. She is currently working on receiving her confirmation at the church, in her church. Mia loves sports and plays softball with the Pelham City Girls' Softball Association and love, and also plays travel ball with the Steelbury Softball Team. She's a multi-position player, including fishing, and she loves to play the game. This dedication has led to her involvement in training to be an umpire for softball games. Mia's immediate goals are to finish the year with a 4.0 GPA and give everything she does her hardest effort. When asked about some important issues facing her and her peers, she shared her concerns that everyone is on their phones and they don't communicate with each other face-to-face. Mia's parents are very proud of their daughter and share this. Mia is a very hard worker. She is also very athletic and skilled at a variety of sports. She is always considerate of others and is filled with compassion. Congratulations, Mia.
We'd always like to take this opportunity to acknowledge that Mia's success is often a team effort. Parents, neighbors, friends, those that are here to support her, if you'd stand some good apology, please.
Pelham City Junior High School selected Austin Hawkins as the January Student of the Month.
Congratulations.
A bright, disciplined, and hard-working young man, Austin Hawkins has been selected as Pelham City Junior High School's Student of the Month for January 2014. Austin is admired by his teachers for his leadership role in the classroom. They state Austin leads by example. He waits for his turn to speak, and then, when he does, he contributes both intelligent questions and intelligent comments. They also noted that Austin is a problem solver. He is motivated to succeed. In addition to his dedication to producing work of a high quality, he is willing to ask for help and he treats both adults and peers with respect. He is a joy to have in class. Austin is off to a great start this year academically. He has earned both the Silver Renaissance Award and the membership, and membership on the PJHS World Honor Role for maintaining a high GPA as a seventh grader last year and in his first semester as an eighth grader. He continues to excel this year while tackling a challenging curriculum that includes Spanish 1B. Austin balances his academics with a myriad of activities outside of school, including playing basketballs for the St. Elizabeth's C-Y-O-T. He enjoys spending time with family and friends. He is proud of the time he has spent since 2004 volunteering with his family for Relay for Life, an international fundraising event for cancer research and awareness. In his spare time, Austin loves to listen to music, play basketball, and hang out with go- and go-viking with his friends. Austin has clear goals ahead, but states that his main goal is to go to college, preferably the University of North Carolina. When asked about the most important issues facing him and his peers, Austin shared his concern that drug and alcohol use is a major issue in the lives of young people today. Austin's parents commented, "We," as his parents, "have always been proud of Austin's dedication to his schoolwork and grades. We are so proud of him." Congratulations, Austin.
Austin's family? How about KJH?
Hi, I'm Emily White, and I'm the representative for KJHS. KJH is pleased to introduce our December Student of the Month, Eby Guadra.
Congratulations. You also get the award for being the first one here.
Eby has been nominated by his senior teachers because he works very hard and is extremely respectful, polite, and thoughtful. He has, he is inquisitive and intent on obtaining the correct answers. His participant, his participant in class discussions models his work on teacher demonstrations. His work shows thought and understanding of curriculum. He always has a smile on his face and never leaves class without a thank you to the teacher and go wishes for the rest of the day. He is the consummate student that every teacher has ever hoped for. At KJHS, Eby, he likes English class because they have, uh, had the opportunity to write a novel and submit it online in November for National Writing, or National Novel Writing Month. Eby also plays our eighth grade boys' basketball team. When he's not in school, Eby can be found playing catch with his younger brother or playing basketball or baseball. Eby's family is very proud of him. His mother has this to add. Eby is a very big-hearted boy who always tries to please everyone. He is very sensitive and caring, and we are all proud of his accomplishments. Congratulations, Eby. KJH is also pleased to introduce January Student of the Month, Brianna Day.
Congratulations.
Brianna has been nominated by her team of teachers because she is an excellent student. She's creative, cooperative, and independent. She is very personable and a team player. Ms. Burles, Brianna's algebra teacher, sums it up well. Brianna is a consistent student who brings her best to class every day. Her work is thoughtful and thorough. It demonstrates mastery of content and attention to detail. She works well with her classmates and is willing to contribute her ideas and listen to what others have to say. At KJHS, Brianna likes all of her classes, but her favorite is Science with Mr. Schmied because he enjoys the labs and history with, with Mr. Eckland because he makes history fun. Brianna has not, has been maintaining a 4.0 and has perfect attendance at her whole time at KJHS. Brianna is actively involved in Relay for Life, which she has participated for the past six years, and she is looking forward to running another season of tracking this break. Brianna's, Brianna's parents are very proud of her. We have this to add. Brianna has a set of personal goals for herself since the fifth grade and put her personal best pursuit of excellence. She is hardworking, respectful, and has a positive attitude. She puts extra effort and attention to detail in every aspect of her schoolwork, which helps her excel in many academic areas. We are extremely proud of her accomplishments. Thank you all to her extraordinary teachers in helping her succeed at KJHS. Congratulations.
How about Pelham High School? We have somebody here from Pelham High School.
Hello, I'm Cara Grant, and I'm the representative from Pelham High School. Pelham would like, would like to introduce Jorge Bugaren as one of our January Student of the Month. Jorge is one of the top students of his class and has a rigorous course load. He took English 1A at the SRJC, AP Econ, AP Calculus BC, varsity jazz band, honors physics, AP Environmental Science, AP Spanish IV, and Academic Decathlon. Recently, he's done the speech and interview portion of the Academic Decathlon and will continue to do the remaining seven multiple choice tests. He's also a part of the Pelham School Band and Drum Line. He just performed in the concert at the Mystic. The competition season for Drum Line is going to start up in a month, and the whole Drum Line is psyched to compete. Spring sports are also going to start soon, and he's part of the Pelham High School Tennis Team. Jorge has been a part of the team since sophomore year, and he's looking forward to his final season at PHS. Outside of school, Jorge partakes in club activities such as beach cleanups with the Global Citizens Club and the debates at JSA. Overall, he is in, he is an active student who looks forward to go to college and leave his mark on the world. Congratulations for him.
Jorge's family?
Hello, I'm Mackenzie Moreta, and I am the other representative from Pelham High School. Pelham would like to introduce Megan Guera as our Female Student of the Month. Megan Guera is a senior at Pelham High School. She attended Grant Elementary from second to sixth grade and went to junior high at PJHS. She is currently ranked fifth in her class and has maintained well over a 4.0 GPA throughout high school. She has played soccer for three years at PHS along with many other years playing recreational and club soccer. She has more recently gotten involved with school theater, performing in Grease and the upcoming production of Legally Blonde, and also Cinnabar's production of Annie. The most influential thing Megan did in high school was two summer service trips to Mexico, where she built houses, played with children, and helped out in a medical clinic. She also did community service with Girls on the Run, CSF, and Relay for Life. She is a part of countless organizations on school, including a three-year member and now club secretary of Safe School Ambassadors, a lifetime member and twelfth-grade representative of CSF, and is currently the senior class secretary in her ASB class. Her future plans include studying something in the health services field at a four-year university, although she is not sure whether she would like to be on the East Coast or West Coast. Congratulations, Megan.
Megan's family, young people. We did good. How about Costa Grande?
Hello, my name is Jessica Sandoval, and I am Costa Grande's co-SP president, and it's an honor to congratulate Tina Lee as our second Student of the Month for the month of December. Tina Lee is a hardworking and dedicated student. She divides her time between school and other extracurricular activities. Some of these extracurricular activities include participating in schools, in the school's Academic Decathlon team, where she won a bronze medal in speech/interviews, participating in the school's band as a principal sustenance, volunteering at the Pelham Valley Hospital, and, uh, Wild Care, a wildlife rehabilitation center in Marin, and is, and swimming on the Costa Grande Swim Team. She has taken many AP courses and is an AP scholar with distinction. Tina has also been awarded the Harold Mahoney Top Ten Award for her junior year. Her favorite subject is math and has taken courses at the San Rosa Junior College to study mathematics more in depth. She is currently enrolled in Multi-Viral Calculus at the San Rosa JC. With her love of mathematics, she hopes to pursue a career in engineering. Tina hopes to be able to continue her education, um, and pursue an engineering, uh, career in engineering at Cornell University, and is also looking into colleges in Canada such as McGill University and University of Toronto. In her free time, Tina enjoys spending time with her family and friends. Congratulations, Tina.
Tina's family, a friend?
I would like, uh, to also congratulate Ellerain Carl as our second Student of the Month for the month of, or as our first Student of the Month for the month of January. Ellerain Carl is a senior at Costa Grande High School. She has participated in many school activities, including cross-country team and track, and the track team, Academic Decathlon, and Interact Club, a service-based club affiliated with Rotary. This year, she's co-editor-in-chief of the award-winning school paper, The Goucher Gazette. Outside of school, Ellerain has been member of the Pen Grove 4-H Club and is president for this year. She reads, she raises registered dairy goats, cattle, and hogs, which she shows at the local and state fairs every summer. She volunteers at the staff, uh, as a staff member of the Sonoma County 4-H Camp for Children. This year, she will be serving as the director for the camp. Additionally, she's the member of California Senior Dairy Wolf Team, winning first place at the National Hosting Convention competition this past year. Ellerain has also been dancing for 11 years in, uh, with Contessa Ballet. In her future, Ellerain would like to attend a four-year university and major in agriculture, communications, political science, or journalism. She sees herself pursuing a career in journalism or law, uh, or law field related to agriculture. Congratulations, Ellerain.
And now I'd like to congratulate Hannah Lee as our second Student of the Month for the month of January. Hannah is an honor student at the Costa Grande High School. She participates in Academic, in Academic Decathlon and plays on the badminton team. Hannah is the president of Costa Grande's Friday Night Live Club, which is the local chapter of national organization charged, uh, with alcohol and drug prevention among teenagers. Outside of school, Hannah volunteers at the Salvation Army Church. She enjoys playing, playing the piano, performing everywhere, from local nursing homes to San Francisco Conservatory of Music. After high school, she plans on attending a four-year college and majoring in political science. Her long-term goal is to become a lawyer, a senator, or even the next Supreme Court Justice.
I think you can all tell why that's the most best part of this meeting. Wide my way back around here. Um, a couple of things. So that was nine students out of 7,583 students. So that's pretty cool. You should be proud of yourself. Not, not of a big deal. Uh, you will find that, uh, when you give us a little bit of time, your name will be engraved on the Wall of Fame over here on the side. Comes with some fabulous prizes as well, which I can't share with you now in front of everybody else. But if you call, I'll tell you, give you the passwords to get in here whenever you want. Show it off to your friends, okay? I make light of that, but you should be very proud of that. Uh, there's some pretty accomplished people going back many, many years up on that wall. To the eighth graders, I will also share with you that I hope you are paying attention to what you heard the seniors were doing. They set a pretty high bar for you, and, uh, there's not a lot of, and I'll challenge you with this, there's not a lot of repeat customers, if you will, up on that wall, eighth grade and then coming back as a twelfth grade. So hopefully, you eighth graders who are here tonight, you'll be able to, uh, to do that. You make us all very proud. We appreciate it. There's a lot of people who work very hard to help you get where you're at, not just you, obviously, but your friends, your family, your teachers, your, uh, other school employees, your bus drivers, your cafeteria folks, the people here at the district, and even the five of us, we're all very, very proud of you. So thank you very much for that. All right? I am going to call. Hopefully you can talk the parents out of some yogurt or ice cream on the way home, because I'm going to call a quick break for anybody that needs to go to study, go to a, go to a Pelham High School basketball game, uh, go home and have dinner. So we'll call about a two-minute break. We'd love to have you stay, please stay, but if you can't stay tonight, we understand. We'll see you here next, uh, two weeks, okay? Let's go on to item H2, the mid-year report on 2013-14 board goals.
Hi, um, I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about our board goals for this year. As you remember, we have two board goals. One is to implement Common Core, and the other is to implement the LCAP or the LCFF, which is the Local Control Funding for you. So we're going to be quick. We're going to try to get you a whole bunch of information, just compressed amount of times, okay? Um, so I was going to have us actually go out here to this website, but I'm not going to make us do this, and putting this up here so that you know that you can go to this website and see what is so different about Common Core teaching and learning. Because at that website right there is the actual test that the kids, well, it's a, a practice test that the kids are going to take, and you can take a look at the different questions and the kinds of questions that the kids are going to be answering. I encourage everybody to get onto this website and to look at the practice test, because it is very, very different from what we have been doing in CST, okay? So that's just my little infomercial there. Um, so it's important that other kids, the kids have actually, are actually getting a chance to get onto the practice test to see what it looks like. The teachers have all been on the practice test.
Hang on just one second. Where were you? Thank you.
I got it.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm really good at this.
I know.
Grandma's grandma.
It's Grandma. Um, our secondary teachers all took the practice test on January 6th so that they know what it looks like and what to expect. Um, and it's really informing us and helping us understand what is different between Common Core and teaching in 20th century as opposed to teaching in the 21st century. So what are we doing to get prepared for Common Core? And you can see that we had our priorities set, our committees, EDTEC and K-12 Curriculum Staff Development set these four priorities. You've seen them before. So quickly, elementary has completely drafted and is now piloting math units at every single grade level. Um, and the grade, and the math units are completely aligned to Common Core with three types of assessment embedded in each unit. So there's, um, a performance task, um, an informative task, a formative task that they give at the beginning so that they know what the kids know and what they don't know, then kind of a mid-unit check, and then finally a summary at the end, so that they can, um, track children's progress through the units. EDS is the assessment system that we are, are now using, and, um, the elementary teachers have been introduced to it and are actually just ripping up the, the lines, creating assessments to be used in their math units. And our ELA leadership team is meeting and will be planning the rollout for spring of 2014 in the next two weeks for English Language Arts. In the secondary, we have a decision about integrated versus traditional mathematics, and our committee has voted to support and go for the integrated pathways. So we will, in 2015, be introducing Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3 instead of Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2, Trade, Calc, all that stuff. So we will be going to the integrated model, and we will be spending the next 18 months getting ready to do that. Good news. Um, in science, we are targeting fall of 2015 to also move from the way our science curriculums are presently set up to an integrated science that integrates physical, life, um, sciences together, physical life and life sciences together. Um, ELA, social science is our work on performance tasks that they are going to pilot in the spring of 2014, and PE and all of our electives are working on a strategy called Close Read, which is a strategy to get children deeper into reading texts and answering questions based on that things. Okay? In technology-based instruction, you, as you know, we funded Phase A, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. We funded Phase A at our last board meeting, um, which is the build-out of the current infrastructure. We funded Phase A at our last board meeting, which is the build-out of the current infrastructure. You can read all that. We have, our goal is that second bullet, which is the upgrade to a one-to-one or a BYOD program. We have a new E-Rate consultant who is helping us clarify how to get the E-Rate fundings and is helping us apply for those E-Rate fundings. An E-Rate is the federal money that comes to us to reduce our costs around communications, building wires, and doing all of that kind of thing. And we're also working with AT&amp;T and SCO to increase bandwidth, but we'll talk about that in just a minute. We're also looking at the purchase of additional Chromebooks and really focusing those Chromebooks on the teaching of learning and then also using them for the testing, okay? I'd like to introduce Mike Cole, our Director of Technology, and he's going to talk about this build-out and the increase in bandwidth.
Our internet connectivity consists largely of two pieces, and one is the infrastructure, the hardware, the wireless access points, the cabling, and switches, routing, and also communication capacities that are supplied by AT&amp;T. And we recently updated our, our capacities for the AT&amp;T communication part from, in the left-hand corner box, we upped the bandwidth from 50 to 100, 50 to 100, and beyond. With, and also from, from here to SCO, from 100 to 200. That is a, that's a collector circuit, and that adds up to about a gigabyte. That's as large as we can get with an OptiMan circuit. So we are approaching our, our capacity with our AT&amp;T contract, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Phase A, which Jane touched on earlier, and was the contract we approved last week, so thank you for that, is the connectivity of district own, own devices. It'll allow for that. And it's a build-out of the infrastructure at all the schools, and essentially, we'll have the backbone or the capacity within the school to go from 100 megabytes per second to 1,000 megabytes per second, otherwise known as a gigabyte, at each school. And that's to the, the edge of the school itself.
Megabytes or megapits?
Stop. Phase, wait, hang on a second.
I'm sorry about that.
No, we're not going to do this. You know the rules. When you want to speak, you'll speak when you're directed to speak, but this is not a public meeting. This is a meeting in public. There's a difference. We have the discussion. Let's keep it.
To clarify.
And again, this is for us.
For all of us.
You get to listen.
Good.
There's a point where you get to comment if you'd like.
Good.
And we'll get there.
Cool.
It's not.
What we'll, we'll gain in Phase A is a wireless access point in every other classroom and cabling to accommodate that to the point where there's a switch. And that switch connects up to our existing fiber within the school, and that's where the, that's the backbone part, and that connects to the, the edge of the school to another, another switch where all of those combine. That jumps off into the AT&amp;T portion for the, into the cloud. So that's, that'll be Phase A. Phase A plus is boosting up that cloud, the capacity to that cloud. As I mentioned earlier, the, we are at capacity for the OptiMan circuit that we have, and the A plus is for a switched Ethernet system that is scalable, so we can increase the connectivity, the bandwidth going into the cloud and thus to the internet from 1 gigabyte to 10 gigabytes, and that promises to be a larger amount. We've applied for E-Rate, it's in process of applying for E-Rate. If we, well, when we get granted that, we'll know in July, and then there's a, AT&amp;T assures me that a maximum of six months to implement that. It is of a tier of E-Rate that we are fairly sure we'll get funded for. Phase B is further infrastructure at the site expansion. What Phase B will do is to bring a wireless access point to every classroom in the elementary symbols. It'll take the access points that we presently have in the high schools and bring them to the elementary, so we're not throwing anything away when we're using the access points, and then putting in a, a stronger access point in the every other classroom at the high schools. That combined with the A plus and the Phase A will, will give us enough bandwidth to accommodate our BYOD and one-to-one program. With the switched Ethernet, I just note, there's a recommendation in, in some of the literature about what it takes, what it'll take to maintain a smarter, balanced Common Core program within schools, not just the testing. A, A will accommodate the testing, but the ongoing needs for a, for the infrastructure, for bandwidth, a predictor is you need about a gigabyte per thousand students. This will accommodate that. So we're building this out for, for the next few years, and who knows what technologies will come to boost that bandwidth and improve. Are there any questions?
Questions here. Are you done? When James is done, we'll open up the call. And then we'll go back.
Thank you, Mike. So Phase A and Phase A plus, is that, are they combined in what we approved last, two weeks ago?
No, the A plus, we're applying for E-Rate.
Okay, so it's just A, we'll go to July?
Pardon?
We'll go in July.
We'll know in July whether we receive it. The, the application will be out probably within the next few weeks. It's the, the same tier of E-Rate that our telephone lines and our communications and the present OptiMan get approved every year. It's where a lot of the money goes, it's in the E-Rate program, and that's why the second tier, which, which covers other, other things, extraneous devices, is dwindling, but probably more information tomorrow.
In Phase A, the district feels confident that that will allow for use in every other classroom to have?
That's, that's the, that's the construction plan, is it'll put a wireless access point for coverage. It'll cover the whole school.
All of the school?
It will cover the whole school, but that does not mean density. We talked about BYOD, and we're talking about students bringing their own devices in, the district own devices, and some of the predictors and the bandwidth on those, someone, a student might have two or three devices that they bring in. It's a huge amount of bandwidth that's necessary for that, so we're building that for the future.
So is there a plan for Phase A, like it did writing, and we just have to implement it, or that's what's starting next week?
There, there is a plan implied by the, our, our E-Rate acceptance from McDowell and McCanley. We built this plan according to the recommendation of consultants that helped us with the E-Rate application and the win. It was vetted by the PUC, who have received the E-Rate programs, and they accepted our RFP, Request for Data Proposal, which had the plan, accepted the bid from AMS, who built our Phase A. So some of this is, it's called value engineering, where they just take the numbers of classrooms and, every other classroom, you get 10, you can have five labs, and cable into it, and they know how much the money will cost to do that. So in, in a real high-level view, it's a pretty simple plan of just replacing the switches, the wireless access point, the cabling, and then when we're done, we'll get a, we'll get a complete ASBelt and know exactly where things are at. We'll, we're having a meeting, planning meeting next week, which I forgot to mention, we have a couple of logistics and keys, and when they're going to do the cabling, if they're going to be cabling after school hours, not interfere. And then the next meeting will be another walkthrough with the crews that'll be doing the work. And once all the cabling's in place, then the labs get put in place, the switches get put in place, and then done, and the equipment's, that's been ordered also.
Is SCO giving us any assistance in systematizing this across all the schools in the district, or what, what are they really providing here in the way of technology?
They are our internet service provider.
Implementation.
And they are working with us also with a switched Ethernet application for E-Rate, because that needs to, to connect up with our system, and they're using that same set system for the rest of the county.
But I'm wondering, are they helping us with the physical implementation and the, you know, the analysis? Is SCO active in that or no?
They, they act as guides occasionally, but they don't have an active part in it. We do use them occasionally for router work, because they, they serve us for our filtering systems, they serve us for our numbering system, and our IP address systems. They do a lot of security work for us. And they also give us access to scenic internet connection at the corner of the city. It's a, it's a huge pipe that's supplied by, it's a state-funded, state program that gives discount rates, the huge amounts of bandwidth to the internet, and that internet node is, is only given to county offices, so this is the, the model that nearly every school district uses.
Any other questions from Mike? Then we'll go back to Jane. After Jane's done, we'll open up the call.
How, how long will it take us to get to Phase B? How much is that going to cost?
Phase B is $240,000. Little more than that. Should be announced for Phase B, because I think it's going to be contingent on other funding sources, which I think CSU talked about. Phase A will be, the equipment comes in, it's a six before we turn around with the equipment and then work can begin, so we may be a couple of months out. I'm doing some negotiations with them to try to speed that along as quick as possible. We are one of many districts doing this very, very same thing across the state and perhaps across the, the whole country, but California is so far behind in getting that SBCC money with a shot in the arm or a gun in the butt. Any more questions? Thank you.
Jane?
Can you ask questions again?
No, but you can make comments, and if there's a comment that's a question that you'd like to know a minute or two, then it'll last one. Again, this is a meeting that comes to us. It's not out there, it's here.
Okay, I understand. Okay. We all need to know.
So our other goal is LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan, and I just wanted to give you a very quick update. The dist, the district, the state has now lumped, we have eight priority areas that we talked about a couple of months ago, they're now lumped into three big buckets, we'll call them. The first bucket is, is basic, and you can see where it is focusing, just on teachers and their credentials, materials, and facilities. I've made just a couple of notes there about where we're focusing. Also is state standards implementation in that bucket, where we're focusing on professional development, and these are the priorities around professional development that the committee is really talking about right now. Course access is the other part of the basic bucket, and you can see that this is a big area for us, that the committee has decided that we really need to focus and prioritize this area. Our DAM shows that we have 32.8% of our graduates graduating A through G-ready, which means they're ready for CSU or UC. And it is the desire of the committee to increase that percentage. So you can see some of the ideas that we're just beginning to talk about listed there around opening access to all courses for students, looking at additional career ed opportunities, and then realigning courses, just as we're doing with math, instead of doing Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2, Math 1, 2, 3, in that integrated manner, and really integrating and realigning courses so that we're aligned with Common Core and what's going on in the 21st century for us. The second bucket is pupil achievement. You can see some of the findings that the committee has found there, that the ELD or the ELL, English Language Learners, the SED, Students with Disability, or Socioeconomically Disadvantaged, and SWD, Students with Disabilities, achievement is lagging, and that they feel strongly that if the students receive higher rates of support, aligning these resources, getting all these resources that we have in the district lined up, the kids will do better, the kids will achieve more. The priorities are listed there, additional instructional support, including an RTI model, a fully implemented RTI model, at all school sites, providing structured ELD at all school sites, English Language Development, so that our EL students are moving a more rapid pace towards full proficiency in English. And then in this, additional instructional time, which includes extending a day, making the days longer, and then making the years longer, okay? Other pupil outcomes, we've just talked a little bit about this, accelerated learners and looking at what we need to do to make sure our accelerated learners are progressing, arts and PE. Finally is engagement, the last bucket is engagement, and our committee has really focused in on parent involvement as one of the high priorities, and you can see there what they're listing and talking about around parent involvement, making connections, it's really about making connections between home and school, making them early and making them often. So for example, instead of waiting until sixth grade to get the seventh graders, get them ready for seventh grade, to start in fourth grade, to talk with parents about what kids are going to do in junior high. Our pupil engagement and school climate, you can see by those little, the data points there, that we are very successful in this area, and so the recommendation from the committee right now is to continue, and to continue what we're doing, and looking at using LCAP funds to continue. That's it. Questions?
Yeah. Questions? Top of the 32.8% A through G-ready graduate, that's here, our district?
That's here in our district.
How do we rate with other districts, or with state average, do you know?
It's, it's funny, Sonoma County has a funny thing going on, because
Shocking.
Because of Dan Rosen Jr. College and the excellence of Dan Rosen Jr. College, many of our kids say, well, I don't really need to take three years of math, because I'm just going to go for two years over at SRJC and then I'm going to transfer. So many times, the A through G rates in Sonoma County are lower than rates across the state.
So we think that's fun.
Yeah. Okay? But it's not, it's something that the committee is prioritizing, is something that we really need to look at and work with.
And then, sorry for scanning him.
It's okay.
And then our CTE courses, do you know how many kids go on that aren't A through G-ready that end up doing some sort of license, something or other that comes from?
Good question. I'll research that.
That'll be interesting, just to see if that, if we can start moving those A through G, like, you know, just what happens there.
And that's the core goal of Common Core, is that every single child gets not only this A through G college-ready, but also gets this career-ready, so that we really look at beginning to integrate, we're working hard right now to get the CTE classes aligned to A through G and A through G-approved, but we're also looking at how can our core classes and our CTE classes work together to bring different kinds of opportunities to kids where they get to apply what they're learning in a hands-on environment.
A through G aside, what, do you have the numbers on how many students or seniors
A through G aside, what, do you have the numbers on how many students or seniors enter into or matriculate into a four-year college as a percentage?
We have that percentage, and I don't know what it is right now. I have to pull it out of, I can't pull it out of my head. I believe it's a 140%, but let me check that also, okay?
Okay. I mean, A through G is one number, but it's actually matriculating into four-year colleges. I mean, as you see, but there's other standards of kids.
Right, there are other colleges, the private colleges don't necessarily need the A through G.
Exactly, exactly. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit misleading, because there's still kids going to college, although not technically A through G compliant.
Right, good. So I will research that one also.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Okay. Other questions?
Any other questions?
RCI, Jane.
Response to intervention, no, it's good that you stopped to ask, because if you don't, if you don't ask, then everybody's sitting in the room going, what is she so talking about? So RTI is response to intervention, and basically what it is, is looking at working with children, giving them an assessment, seeing how they're doing, differentiating their instruction, giving them another little assessment to see if they got it. If they didn't get it, then we go back and reteach it. And looking at different levels of that reteaching, because some kids will get it the first time, some kids will get it the second time, other kids won't get it until the fifth time. But arranging our instructions so that we make sure that every single child gets what we want them to get and masters those Common Core standards.
Thank you.
But that's you.
I was going to ask about the CTE, A through G thing, how that was going and if there's been, I mean, it takes time, I know, but...
We've made great movement. We really have made great movement. SCO has helped, Patricia Biagi from Sonoma County, she's working with our teachers on an ongoing basis. We have increased, I think we have five new CTE courses that are aligned to A through G, and more are in the pipeline, more are coming every single, every month.
That's good, Jane, really good.
Yeah.
Right. And then moving towards the integrated model of math? So kids that, you know, maybe are juniors, seniors in 2015 and need their calculus class or so they'll just...
Our first children who are going to be the recipients and the proud owners of an integrated math education will be in seventh grade next year.
But I'm, but, so kids, you'll continue...
There's still calculus.
So kids that are sort of...
Yeah, for the kids listening at home, you should have...
Kids that are in, you know, taking Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II. If you're in the pipeline already, we'll finish off.
I got it, you'll start first.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to run two kind of different programs at the same time. And as they graduate, we'll eliminate the non-integrated, the traditional program and increase the integrated program.
And for those at home, this is more along the European maths program, correct? It's worldwide.
Every other country in the world, except us, teaches math in an integrated manner.
So how does that work, Jane, with college applications?
UC just came out last week and has supported the integrated math pathways. So that's a big, that's a big thing. It's really important that UC supports this. So they'll be working over the course of the next year also to clarify what that means, but they are in support of the integrated math pathways for all students. So they will probably do kind of what we're doing, where as the integrated pathway comes, increases, the traditional pathway will decrease.
If this is going to model the European, wait, are we going to see a swing back to the metric system or not?
It hasn't worked the last five times they've tried it.
That's my point.
Any other questions, Jane?
How about your, sorry, English Language Arts? Is the district writing program, is that sort of...
We are in the process of revamping the writing program along with the whole English Language Arts program. You'll see some things, if you're hanging about the elementary schools, you're seeing some things called thinking maps hanging on the walls. And that's the beginning of the new writing program, the beginning of a writing program that we're walking towards. And the schools have self-selected into that. It's been pretty amazing that they're just raising their hands and saying, we want to do that one, we want to do thinking maps, we want to do Right From the Beginning, that's the one we want to do. So we're supporting them by training trainers and sending all teachers to training and integrating the training across like the Wednesday afternoons and that kind of thing. And next year, we will start rolling with Right From the Beginning, which is the writing program that goes with the thinking maps.
What about current textbooks? Putin, Mifflin, how does basically debunked?
With Common Core, it's interesting, you can use almost any material, any resource, but it's the strategies that you use with it that makes it Common Core. So yes, the publishers are all, they're right now madly writing, madly, madly writing new textbooks. Many of those textbooks are not actual physical textbooks, they're books. So we're in transition phase right now. The state adopted some math textbooks last week, and when I was talking to the consultant that we work with from SCO, he said, don't, they, what they did is, they kind of arranged the chapters and took some pages off, threw them over on the book. So they're not as Common Core-aligned as they will need to be. So we're still, they're still, everybody's, this is also new, that everybody is still working hard at catching up. Our teachers have been very resourceful and have gone out and finding, found materials that are open sourced on the internet. For example, the state of New York has an entire curriculum available for free to everybody. So a lot of people are using some of the New York or some of the Georgia things that are already out there. We will need to be buying materials, but we haven't gotten to that part yet, because they're just too new yet.
But that will be something for maybe the fall of 2014, that this committee that will work on to support our teachers, sort of providing, I mean, right now, I think they're out there doing it on their own.
Yeah, they sure are. And they are, they are heroes in my eyes for what they've been doing. They have done an amazing job of collaborating and working together and pulling together a math curriculum that is really exemplary in a lot of ways for our students.
What I read, we went to SCO, we went to SCO legal update last night before this one. And I thought one of the laws that got passed that just got implemented was the requirement that all textbooks be available electronically. Wasn't that one of those?
Yes, it was one, 1114, you have to have, any print has to also be available electronically.
So it's a very new world that we're living in, it's pretty exciting. It's also a little bit nerve-wracking.
Any other questions, Jane, at this time? All right, so we'll open it up for public comment.
Great, just want to clarify, this is an agenda item?
Come on up, please.
Perfect, so what I'd like to do is make sure that we follow the district bylaws regarding public comment for an agenda item. We are not limited to five minutes, as we are in regular public comment. So I will have the time that I need to make the points about this plan, because I've now done a lot of work to analyze a lot of this plan.
How about you start by introducing yourself?
Certainly, I will. My name is Paul McGavin, I'm a computer hardware, software, and networking consultant. I've worked with major corporations for 20 years. I've worked with Levi Strauss and Company, and Medtronic, and Nissan, and Procter &amp; Gamble, and countries all over, this, companies all over this country, to advise them on how to do the most efficient means of using software, hardware, and networking to achieve their objectives. So what I've then done is I have made a California Public Records request way back on January 8th, and I made another one on January 14th, for the purpose of trying to get the public's hands on the plans that you just presented tonight. And I asked for them for many weeks ago, and I asked for them properly, and I asked for, to have them, not copies, but to have inspection on site of those records. I was illegally denied all of that information up until tonight. It is documented from January 8th to the present. That's the first time I saw any plan whatsoever from this district regarding bandwidth, bandwidth objectives, how we're going to get them, how we're going to manage them, what are the devices that might get us there? Are they the best devices? Are they not the best devices? Are they a good buy? Nothing was given to me, at all. Unbelievable that the public is put at a huge disadvantage. We're not able to get our hands on this information to properly analyze it in time to affect and educate you, so you can make intelligent decisions on your vote. We are in the midst of ready, fire, aim. You fired last week, you committed to $750,000. And now, you're just learning about what is behind this contract. So let's start looking, because today was the first day I got my hands on the full contract. I asked for it weeks ago, but I just got it today. These are some of the detail that no one at this board has seen. No one looked at the details of the $750,000 contract before they voted on it. That unfortunately is not living up to their fiduciary responsibilities. They actually need to look at the details of this contract to understand, are we doing a good job? Are we spending our public money wisely? Are we achieving all of our objectives? Not just our bandwidth objectives. You also have other things you have to achieve. You have student health and safety objectives that you have to...
This is way on the topic, sir. I'm going to continue with it. Let me also just clarify, you don't have a number of time. You have enough time to...
You can cut, you officer, it'll be another documentation of what you're doing.
Keep going.
So I'm going to give you as much information I can about this contract and what your goals and needs are with respect to this contract. So what we're looking at here is just one exhibit, and what I want to do is I'm going to zoom in on this part right here. This is a Maraki MR-16, 600 megabits wireless access point. And it comes with an enterprise cloud controller license, only a three-year license. How does that work? Well, what it really says is that we're not just buying this router one time, we're continuing to buy this router through the whole lifetime of the router. We're going to spend $240 extra dollars every three years just to have this router. This gets to be very expensive. These are 25. This is just one school. We have lots of schools. And you ask yourself, wait a minute, wait a minute, 443, 240, wait, it gets more expensive than that. Let me show you how expensive these routers really are, okay? Here is an exhibit that I emailed the board before they voted on the plan. And I presented it last week, so they can have a really good understanding of whether or not this was a good buy or not. The answer is, this is a terrible buy. Any sophisticated buyer can figure this out and say, we could do much, much better than this. 443 for the item, $100 for the install, 240 for year one licensing, $784 in year one. Uh-oh, but it gets more expensive. It's $1,000 if we keep it four years. Uh-oh, it's more expensive. It's $1,200 if we keep it seven years. Why are we paying licensing on a per router basis for just wireless access points? Is this a good buy? No, this is a terrible buy. Why is that? Well, you're only getting 600 megabytes per second. Now, my question with Mike Cole was, he had on his slide a large letter capital and a smaller, that's megabits per second. That's only one-eighth of a megabyte. Everything on his slide said megabits and gigabits. That's only one-eighth of what he reported. I'm assuming the slide is correct. I'm assuming he said it wrong. So we really do need to understand what are the differences between megabits, megabytes, gigabits, gigabytes? We'll get to SCO in a second. Let me finish this up. Your router, that is anywhere from $1,000 to $1,200 bucks, plus $240 every three years, is only getting you 600 megabits per second. Whereas you could actually go out and source something that costs $50, $50, and get $1,000 megabits per second. Wow. So now let's compare it. Let's actually say, all right, a lot of people can use this router. So let's, let's put some users against here and see what the cost per user is. But this one can only get up to eight users, but we can still see what the cost per user is. So, and we can tell what the bandwidth per user is, and the bandwidth per user on this one. So every single measure, we're getting 10 to 20 times the bandwidth of what you get off the wireless router at half the cost. That is a good deal. This wireless router, Marakiti, is a terrible deal. And how many of these are we buying? Do we know? Does anybody know? The details of the contract, how many are we buying? People who voted for $750,000 for this contract, how many Marakiti, wireless routers are we buying? Do you know, Steve? No. Do you know, Mary? No. How about you, Phoebe? How about you, Troy? How about you, Mike? How about you, Sherri? Nobody knows! I had to look it up and add it up. And I'm going to tell you how many. And we're going to take a look at what else we could do with that money, because boy, we could save a whole bunch of money here, no doubt about it. Quick look, 156 of them. 156, it's going to cost anywhere from $122,000 to $200,000. There are much better alternatives. Let me just quickly go to a browser and show you what else is out there. Here's your Maraki. Your Maraki is somewhere in the $600 range. Boy, that's a lot less than we're spending. Why are we buying it for this price? Okay, I've got another Maraki out there for about $600. Well, so why aren't we buying it for that price? No, we're paid licensing every three years. But we could be spending $23. That's what we could do. Why aren't we spending $23 instead of $2,000 or whatever it's going to be? It's a crazy waste of money. So let me tell you why you want to do that, why you want to spend $23 instead of thousands of dollars. Because it gives you the benefit of getting one in every classroom. Really, really important, okay? You'll save money. You go one per classroom, and you save money. Why is that a smart way to do a wireless network? And let me tell you why. Wireless is only safe for anyone if they choose to sip it instead of gulp it. If you say, it's time to do some networking, you turn it on, you use it, you turn it back off. That is exactly what the manufacturers of the cellphones tell you how to manage their device. They tell you specifically not to have the device on while it's in your pocket. It's in their user menu, it's right on your iPhone, it's right in the menus of it. And what you want to do is you want to turn it off when you carry it, turn it back on when you use it. They put those in there for a very good reason, because that way you don't get cancer. That way it's not right up against your body, because that's what creates the cancer. And we all know this. No insurance company is insuring cellphones against health claims. They don't. Your cellphone and your wireless device, whether it be a laptop, or an iPad, or anything else, is just like a cellphone, or worse. When you hold it this close and you're reviewing a video, you're getting five times the radiation that you do off your cellphone. That is why you want to sip it, not gulp it. If you can get one per classroom, all you have to do is change your wiring plan. Instead of thinking about 20 or 30 routers per school and get the wires to those things, think about a little more wire and get a lower-cost wireless access point and stick it in the middle of every ceiling, just like an overhead light. And what you're going to do is you put it on a power switch. And you say the teacher has control over when students will get wireless access, giving her great control to say, all right, you guys are screwing around, stop. She can control the class. The goal is to have a lower signal within the confines of the room, not try to spread it across many rooms. And you want it on when you're using it and off when you're not using it, just like any other very important resource. When you have water, you don't turn it on, leave it on to run all day. You turn it on when you need it, you turn it off when you don't. When you turn on your stove, you just put it on to heat something, you turn it back off. It's a resource, you want to use it sparingly. This is the same thing. Let me tell you the other thing that is important.
Hang on for a second. Sure. So, yeah, I'm just going back through the board procedures and board bylaws. 9323.
And isn't it good that we're learning something tonight, sir? Can you let me go, please?
No. I'm looking at number five.
Okay, so can I actually please finish?
No, you may not. I will give you some time in a minute, but I want to clarify what we're doing.
Thank you.
Please don't interrupt me, dear. My meetings.
Don't interrupt me, sir.
My meetings, I get to do that.
Great.
Item five. A person wishing to be heard by the board shall first be recognized by the president and shall perceive comment as briefly as the subject connects. That's fine. Individual speakers shall be allowed five minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. Each individual person gets five minutes on an agenda or non-agenda item. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending upon the topic, the number of persons wishing to be heard. Is there anybody else here that wants to speak on this? So as a board, I'd like to set a time limit for Mr. McGavin to finish his comments. We've been going about 10 minutes, I'd like to give another 10 minutes. Are you okay with that?
I agree with that, too.
Is everybody okay with that?
Is that, is that giving you enough time?
Everybody done time?
Okay.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, let's go.
Okay.
Let me tell you exactly why this is a smart video. And I actually had a heart-to-heart with Steve for about 15 minutes at the end of the day, after they basically stonewalled me all day and gave me no assistance, and they violated California law, and we'll get to that in public comment, alright? But what I said to Steve was, there's no sense in scoring up and fighting. We should work together. We should work together in order to get a very good solution that's going to build in flexibility for the district. And this is the flexibility that you want. You want the wire to go to the center of the ceiling, just in every single classroom. So now you have flexibility. You have the ability to put a very low-cost router in there. If it breaks, no big deal, $23, you can replace it. Okay, no problem. It doesn't have to go very far, it just has to go to this room. That's perfectly fine for educational purposes and gives the teacher more control. Great. Here's the real benefit. For those students who cannot tolerate wireless, I have one just like that. And I have been forced out of two schools, two of your schools, because you are not providing a safe learning environment. And you can accommodate the needs of these students, who are going to have more and more symptoms over time, because you can take some of these rooms and you can say, I can put an eight-port switch wired on the ceiling and go wire to each of the four corners and wire to the midpoints of each of the four walls, drop them down, and now you have the opportunity to put more eight-port switches at the desk level, and that whole room could be wired. So for the very same wiring plan that will enable you to do wireless everywhere, now you have the ability to do wired in some rooms, wireless in other rooms. That is a huge kind of fit. Why? Things change. We're gonna learn where to go along. If these symptoms become really serious three, four, or five years from now, you're gonna be forced to do something. You wanna build in flexibility now in case that happens. You can't predict, you don't know. Why commit yourself to just one plan now? Build in the flexibility to enable to do low-powered, wired and wireless in every classroom that you needed and allow some of the classrooms to be wired. Now you're building in choice. Now you're accommodating needs. Who might need this? Well, let's see. I can actually take a look at my kindergarten classroom, and I can prove to you that by taking a blood sample from every single kindergarten student in that classroom, they are being affected by that wireless signal. I have no explanation for why my principal and my superintendent will not agree to turn off this wireless router that is in my kindergarten classroom when the kids aren't even using it. It's crazy stupid. And these kids are complaining already, my daughter's complaining. We're leaving the school because of it. And that's all we're asking, is if you're not using it, please turn it off. No, can't do that! Can't do that! That's crazy stupid. I don't get it. No one's ever explained why that's a benefit for us? No one's ever explained why we should be doing it? It's just for some reason, we can't get anybody to move. I'm asking you, you're gonna have to build in choice. You have a $750,000 contract, start swapping out some of these items. Start saving some money, okay? You have to really understand, I have no idea how much SCO is actually bringing to the curb, but that matters. If you're only bringing a trickle to the curb and you're making your pipes this fat all through your school and SCO will never give you more than this, you've wasted a lot of money. Why are we doing this? Why aren't we understanding exactly what is the measurements of the bandwidth coming from SCO? What are the projections that SCO might be able to hit? Use some kind of estimation of saying, eh, not reasonable, not reasonable, and then build what you need. Yeah, a little extra, but not five times extra, right? We are gold-plating inside of our schools to enable these hugely high-powered routers which have higher bandwidth, and that bandwidth goes right through the brains and bodies of students. So now you're actually getting a whole lot more going through them. Keep it all a little lower power, but make the bandwidth high. That's what your wired switches will do for you. So if you want the highest bandwidth going, stick with wired switches. If you wanna give up bandwidth, you go to wireless, alright? So all I'm trying to say is, be smarter about how you buy your stuff. AMS.net contract, I read it. I read it through the county emergency. You think the county emergency is not making money off you? Yes, they are. They're making a lot of money off of you. You think AMS.net is not making money off you? Oh, yes, they are. They are double-dipping on labor all over the place. I've identified it all. I'll show it to you. Why are we paying labor? Every other wireless installation in this school was provided by contract labor that you guys provided by your own employees. Why are we actually going dipping in, spending $200 an hour to do this basic $30-an-hour work? What a waste of money! Wouldn't we rather buy more Chromebooks? Wouldn't we rather actually spend this wisely? I don't get it! But it's ready, fire, aim. It's like, oh, let's spend $750,000, but I don't really know what I'm spending it on. I mean, come on, look at the details. I've seen it. I'm happy to share it all with you. I'm happy to work with you. I'm happy to help you make smart decisions. I don't wanna fight with you. I don't want any legal proceedings. I just want to have a good, safe environment for our kids and good bandwidth, so they have a good education experience. We can do both. We don't have to one or the other. We don't have to square up and say, wireless is the only way. We can do some wired, some wireless. We can test which way goes better, one or the other. You do that with a flexible wiring system. A wire to the center of every room gives you all the flexibility you need. The wiring part of your contract is the least expensive. You're spending the most in your Marakis and in your switches. Your switches are Ferraris of switches. I think you need Ford Focuses. I don't think you need Ferraris. SCO is only driving a Ford Focus up to the curb. You don't need a Ferrari in your school. You need a Ford, you need something that's about the right, that matches what SCO can possibly give you. Alright? It's some ego involved here. I don't get it. I don't understand, you know? But AMS.net essentially is the bully walking you down the hallway, and they're taking your lunch money every step of the way. You shouldn't let them. You shouldn't let them do that. You should put this out to two or three more bids. There is no rush here, folks. Valley Vista last spring did all of their testing in a wired computer lab. They got it all done. You have wired computer labs in almost every school except for Cheridale. You can use that existing resource today without doing a single upgrade and meet all of your testing requirements in this year. There is no rush. There is no reason to hodgepodge this. There is no reason to jam it through. Take your time. Free labor. I am free labor for you. I've been donating my time for almost a year on this. I analyze this contract forwards and backwards. I can give you anything you wanna know about this contract. You ask me, I will give you the information in detail. I spin spreadsheets better than anybody you know. I'm happy to do that work for free. I have skills. I can meter routers, okay? I know how to do it. I will do that work for free. The point is, take advantage of a volunteer. But I can't volunteer at this point. They have written some god-awful letter that is preventing me from volunteering in my own schools. Why? I have no idea, but I am so tired of this harassment. I want this letter gone. I've asked board members to get rid of this letter. No one's done it. It's crazy. Why are you picking on me? I'm not doing anything bad here. I'm trying to give good information to people so they make good and better decisions. Please take advantage of the resources that I have. Please take advantage of the interests that I have. I would love for my daughter to be able to come back to the Peddled Women Cities School District. I really would. I can't have her in it right now. It's too dangerous. We've exceeded federal maximum public exposure guidelines over 700 times in my little girl's classroom this year. That is just uncaring, unintelligent, uninformed. It's just wrong. Don't do this to little kids. You have no idea what happens. And public comment, we will hear what can happen to little kids. I have five minutes of public comment. I think I'm almost up on my 10 minutes, right? So I wanna rest. I just wanna say that it's not correct to think that wireless is nothing. It has significant effects. You want to manage it. You wanna manage it well. You wanna turn it on when you need it, turn it off when you don't. That's intelligent. On all the time, very dumb. Waste of money and power. Puts extra wire power through kids that don't need it. It doesn't give the teacher any control over whether the kids are surfing or not surfing, which I think teachers need that control. You want teachers to be able to turn on and on off the connectivity to manage the classroom. That, I think, is important. You could only do that with a one router per classroom, whether it's wireless or wired. That's my hope. That we actually take the $750,000 and spend it more wisely. Please, I think you'll have a great solution if you do. Thank you.
Move on to... You're up. Give us some good news, will you? Did you bring cash?
Did I bring cash? Well, actually, cash is kind of... But we don't get to, we don't get to spend more money. Well, there's actually a lot to the budget, but I really scaled my presentation back tonight. I mean, obviously, the local control funding formula has a lot. And then that combined with some of what Jane had already talked about, the LCAP, we could be here all night, and I don't think you wanna do that. So, this is a scaled-back version and just kind of the nuts and bolts of the budget. So, the key provisions. He's proposing the greatest increase in the per-student funding since 2000, 2001, and we saw over a 10% increase.
So, that'd be only increases?
Yeah, because they were all decreases after that, so... And he's taking the wrecking ball to the wall of debt. So, as you know, the voters, a number of years back under Governor Schwarzenegger had convinced the voters to support going out for bonds and to get us through a year or two, and huge amount of debt. Part of that wall of debt is also the cash deferrals that have happened. And during the worst of times, up to 45% of our cash was withheld from the districts so that the state could balance their budget and keep enough cash on their side of the books to still be operating. So, he actually is proposing to eliminate that. And then, one of the other largest things walking away in developing good, sound public policy around the state budget is to ensure that there is a rainy day fund. And that was talked about again under Schwarzenegger's proposal when he sold Prop 57 and 58, 47? That we should have a rainy day fund. Well, none of that happened, even though, you know, the voters have been paying off his debt. So, he's actually implementing the rainy day fund and putting on it some very strong criteria about when funds could be pulled out of the rainy day fund. So, $5.5 billion to eliminate the inter-fund deferrals, the cash deferrals. They expected that to be eliminated further out. So, the fact that they can take this amount of money and completely eliminate it is huge. $4.5 billion in additional funding in the implementation of the local control funding formula and speeding up where we are in the timeline as far as school implementation. So hopefully, we'll get there sooner than 2020, 21. Which is a long way out. There's $316 million for Prop 39. That's the energy efficiency dollars coming to the districts to do upgrades. We're looking at windows and the energy management system replacement at our schools. $33 million to fund a 0.86% statutory quota. This is about half of what it was when I presented the first interim to you. So, let's see.
What happened?
Just they recalculated. And it doesn't become finalized until April or May. This $46.5 million going towards Common Core, that won't be at the district level. So, the money that we had gotten earlier this year, the $1.25 billion that has been allocated statewide, this doesn't count to us. This is a state-level implementation and what they need to do to get ready for Common Core. So, what's not included, he's not addressing statewide school facilities bonds. That's really still up in the air about what we're doing as far as looking at facilities for school districts. This is gonna be really interesting issue as they talk about possibly adding a whole nother grade level to the K-12 system, and that being the transitional K or pre-K. So that'll be an interesting discussion as we move forward. No new funding to address special ed shortfalls, no payments on the millions of dollars owed to school districts for all the mandated cost funds. So, that's still part of that wall of debt that needs to come down, but they're putting that off a bit.
Do you have an idea how much ours?
Oh my gosh, no, I do not, but I can find out. There's no new funding to address the unfunded liability in the state teachers' retirement system fund. And right now, the current actuary amount is about $80 billion.
$80, huh?
Eight... Yes.
$80?
Yes.
It's gonna be, in 30 years, it'll be all...
And he's also not proposing any new funding for early childhood education, and that includes the pre-K or the extended transitional kindergarten, even though the Assembly and the Senate have both made proposals with that. He's saying, now is not the time to add new programs on top of everything else that we're doing. He's saying, we need to stop, we need to get back to where we were, or at least, you know, get to an even ground here before we start talking about adding new programs to the mix. So this is looking at where we have been in our funding over the last, since '07, '08. And you can see that in '13, '14, pretty much, we're almost back to '07, '08 funding levels according to this. And then in '14, '15, there's a large jump to $61.6 billion out of the state budget for Prop 98, K-14 education. Yes, oh my gosh, holy smokes. Look at that kid's face. That's about, that about does it. This is a $6.3 billion increase over the current year. And part of this is coming from one-time funds that were recalculated for prior years, for '12, '13. They owe us another $1.8 billion. And then the additional revenues that have come in above projection add to another $1.5 billion. Again, I already showed the local control funding formula, additional funding. Between what they've provided us in this year and what they're proposing next year, there's just over 11% in this year and then 28%. They're saying that we're about a third of the way through with funding the local control funding formula. Remember, we talked about, well, here's where we're at, but here's the target. They're saying that with this funding model, we would be about 30% there. So hopefully, we're gonna see the full implementation of the local control funding formula again before 2020.
That's a drive.
Yes. So, now this last bullet, I want everybody to listen carefully because even though, on average, the per-people funding is supposed to go up by 10.9% or about $751 per ADA, this is really contingent on where your district falls within having the unduplicated numbers of students falling into the socio-economically disadvantaged EL population of foster kids. We are not, we are not very high. We're between 38% and 42% between elementary and secondary. We have districts out there that are nearly 100%. So districts may see, there may be districts out there that see 20% increase, and there may be other districts that barely see any increase. So, we're somewhere in between. We will not see... We will not see 10.9% increase in our funding for '13, '14, '15. We will see much less than that. But that's how it's being shared out there, the average. I just want to be clear, we're not average. For the sake of time, I think I'm going to skip through the local control funding formula issues right now. There is a lot of information because the State Board of Education actually did take action of approving the preliminary language and template that's coming out, but we'll address that on another night. I did want to share this because I know special ed is a topic of discussion here every now and then. He did put a proposal in the budget to talk about establishing a task force to look at the special ed model and all these elements in it. Teacher prep, delivery models, assessment and accountability, early learning, and fiscal issues. So, I think this is a good start to look at how special ed is being funded and the whole program. Another important note is the independent study. Independent study is currently very heavily audited. A lot, a lot of restrictions on who, what, when, where, how independent study is used. He's talking about lifting that and making it a bit easier for kids in the 21st century to use this model. So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on there, other than to share that. Federal programs, they have a bipartisan budget act, the BBA. So, at a minimum, there won't be any additional cuts. Possibly, there's advocates out there saying Title I needs more money, so maybe we might see a boost in Title I and special ed funding. This is still a conservative projection of what the district is looking like. And I'm still working with numbers based on the governor's proposal. Now, as you know, let me see if I can get a new pointer. You know, we always focus on our unappropriated bottom line there. And you see that, at the end of this year, we estimate unappropriated reserves of $5.5 million. Next year, a little over $5.6. And then in '15, '16, just under $7 million of unappropriated. This is, again, conservative. And this number, sorry, I need a new pointer. It's not working. That $6.9 million may go up by at least $1 million, one more. And I'm cautious about taking that leap of saying it's going to be that much higher, but there is a possibility.
Does this incorporate step and poem?
Doesn't.
It does incorporate step and poem. It does, but nothing else. No other increases, no increase in help and welfare, no change to class size. None of that is incorporated.
Does it incorporate any quota? I know it's a little 0.86 for next year. Is it not?
Well, that's part of this fuzzy area. Yes, yes, it does. I mean, it does incorporate an increase, right?
Well, the local control funding formula isn't the same as the quota was under regulations.
That's right.
But it does incorporate a possible increase in the others.
So, anyway, I do expect this to be better than this as we come back with our budgets later on.
Will it ever make?
It may not be until June. May revise will give us another snapshot of what the governor and the legislature and everybody else has got their input onto the governor's proposal. But we're still hearing that it won't be until June that we actually know what we're getting for this year. So, our next steps. So, this kind of encompasses the budget planning process, but also the new local control accountability plan development and how this all works together. So, ongoing developing the local control plan. Our next meeting is February 3rd. Yes? Okay. The May revise. In June, we have to have the adoption of the local control funding formula spending requirements and the local control accountability plan template and requirements. And then, adopt the budget. And the state, hopefully, will adopt their budget on time.
So, I have a question on that third item in June, the actual final local control funding formula spending requirements. Assuming they will tell us by then what we're getting for this school year? Or do we have to just adopt and hope that?
Yeah, it's still going to be, yeah.
We'll be finding out in June.
Before the meeting?
The first meeting in June is our anticipated date for more true local control accountability.
So, the last, the second meeting in May, we anticipate bringing the preliminary and open it up for public comment and input, and then adopting it at the first board meeting in June, and then adopting the final 2014, '15 budget at the final meeting in June. So, that's about it.
Steve, yes? Yes. So, this evening, we have Greg Eisen from Eisen Advisors. They had a survey of our community conducted, and he's going to share with us before this evening the results.
Can you put him a link? You can bring it up in the center.
Whatever. So, at the last board meeting I was at, I was given the direction to conduct a voter survey in terms of whether or not the community that you would like to support, doing a bond measure for the elementary school district or the high school district. And I'm going to give you the results right now. Anybody get a call? Really? Oh, interesting. Okay, so the methodology, so there's about 17,000 registered voters in the elementary school district. Goal is to call 400 that match the demographics of those that would be voting in a June election, because there's no reason to survey people who only voted in November if you're considering them in June. So, we actually matched up the demographics of the political party with the age. And so, everyone who's voting or who took the survey is voting in June. Okay? Went from Wednesday the 8th to Monday, January 20th. Tested aspects of the district, projects, and tax tolerances. Overall margin of error, 4.81% plus or minus. Okay? So, on page four, general questions. So, we start off the survey with just kind of some fluff questions to make people kind of feel comfortable with it. So, the first question, would you say that education at the elementary schools in your communities headed in the right direction or the wrong direction? 45% said right direction, 38% said no, 17% said wrong direction. You're probably wondering, how does this compare? Is this good or bad? This is actually pretty good, as I said, compared to all the rest of the school districts we do surveys for. This is kind of what we wanted to see. I'd have cause for, you know, reason for concern if I saw wrong direction, like in the 30% or higher. We then asked the question, well, how would you rate the quality of education provided by the Petaluma City Elementary School District? So, now, we're kind of like nailing a home with the actual district. And you'll see that 16% excellent, 48% good, 13 fair, 20% have no idea, and only 3% said poor or very poor. How does this compare? This is excellent. Okay? This tells me that, for the most part, your community actually likes you guys, which is great when it comes to doing these types of measures. Right? At the end of the survey, we asked this question, but I put it here just so you have an idea of the people that we're communicating with. At the end of the survey, we asked, do you have any children who are now attending school? Or have you ever had any grandchildren who are attending or have attended school in the past? And you'll notice that 36% of the people surveyed here have zero connection to the school district. Okay? 25% yes, currently 39% yes in the past. All right.
Is that high, 36%?
It's a little bit lower, I'd say. You know, for a lot of districts, like in West County, if I'm taking a look at Sonoma County, that's probably more like 40%, 45%. So, it's either the people that were, happened to be called, there's a lot that have connections, or a lot of people stay here and have like their schools. Page five, general questions. This is not by any means the popularity contest, but we needed to know, what is the community, what's the perception of the district? Right? So, we asked about teachers, principals, superintendent, district's job at managing finances, board of trustees. Okay? So, what we look for in the survey is not the excellent or good. We tend to look at the poor or the very poor. Right? And this is exactly how I wanted it to look. Right? I'm not just saying that to say that. This is actually how I want it to look. It's always teachers are first, principals, superintendent, managing finances, board of trustees. Would a community like, I mean, yeah, would the community like the schools? This is how it's supposed to flow. Right? Reason for concern, if there was ever an issue, would be if this green or orange, the poor or very poor, was like at the 20% level or higher. That would make me say, what's going on here? Public has an issue. And we worked with the school district that had been on the negative list for 10 years. No reason for it, but they were. So, when it came to district's job at managing its finances, it was like 25%. That was just the perception. So, we've got to spend a lot of time educating the community, hey, the district's fine, there's just some issues that were going on 10 years ago. They've now fixed it for the last five years. But once again, things are looking good. Okay? Ideological questions. Do you agree or disagree with the statement that good schools improve property values? 93% agree, 3% disagree, 4% don't know. How does this compare? What's actually interesting is that when we used to ask this survey question from like 2000 to 2006, we actually saw it start going lower and lower and lower. People that agreed at that statement, because people would say, hey, it doesn't matter where I live in California, my home values are going to go up. But since the crash came, we've noticed that people said, wow, actually, it is important where my, where my schools are and where I live. So, we've seen it start ticking up every single year since then. Okay? So, that's a great statement. People realize that quality schools are good for the community. Because the state continues to reduce funding for facility improvements, local voters need to do more to protect the quality of facilities in the local public schools. 81% agreed, 14% disagreed, 5% don't know. Pretty standard. I want it to be 80% or higher. Okay? Question seven, now, right out of the gate. You say, at this time, the district's looking to make some classroom and school facility improvements. Considering doing a bond. Let me read you what the proposed language would read, which is in this yellow box, to improve the quality of education. And we kind of list some of the projects. Would you vote yes or no? 62.5% of the voters said yes. We have about, you know, 20% of the voters said, I'm undecided. Well, then, so we said, well, are you leaning yes or are you leaning no? 7.8% lean yes, 11% said I'm still undecided, 1.3% lean no, 17.5% said no. Which is great, because bonds today, I suppose, when the district did it in 1992, I believe, you have to get 55% rather than 2/3. Okay? So, we're ahead of the curve. Now, we need to educate the community on what some of the projects are going to be. We want to find out, is there a project that your community loves? But to me, most importantly, are there projects that your community hates? Maybe hates is a stronger word, dislikes. Okay? So, repair or replace leaky roofs. Over 80% of the people who responded said, I like that project. Plumbing and sewer, strong support, 80%. Upgrade inadequate electrical systems, 79%. Improve student access to computers and modern technologies, 77%. Modernize or renovate classrooms, restroom, and school facilities, 77%. Once again, what am I looking for? This gray area that says much less likely. All those are less than 10%. Okay? What about if you replace outdated HVAC systems? Strong support, health and safety, strong support. Upgrade PE fields and facilities for school and community use. Pretty good support, not as strong as the other ones. You know, as I said, this is, these are typically the projects that test at the lower threshold. But once again, looking at the gray and the, sorry, the green and the orange, it's still strongly supported. Normally, when I look at projects, and I advise a school district to take the project off the list, if it's probably 35 to 40% of the voters say much less likely, that's kind of a bad project. Okay? So, upgrade campus security, strong support. Replace temporary cords or permanent classrooms, strong support. Your community likes the projects. That's great. Okay? There's a cost to it. Really? All right. Let's ask these questions. What if you knew it was going to cost property owners $35 per $100,000 assessed valuation per year? Would you be more likely or less likely? So, $35. We had 48% said, eh, more likely. And then, you'll see it says, no difference, bond yes, 5% no difference, bond no. There are some people that said, it doesn't really make a difference to me. And so, it's a difficult question to probe. Well, what do you mean by that? So, what we take a look at is when people say no difference, we look at how that voter responded to the overall bond question. Would you be supportive, yes or no? So, when a person says no difference, we say, well, that person actually responded yes to the survey. While this person who said no difference, said no to the survey. So, that's how we kind of chop it up. Okay? So, 30% did not like $35. Okay, what about $30 per $100,000? 50% more likely, 13% no difference, bond yes, 4% don't know. No difference, bond no, 4%, 29% less likely. Okay? So, actually, from our experience, your voters wouldn't be supportive of the $30 tax rate.
Would they?
Would.
Would, yes. You know, this is where, if it was in the 40s, you'd say, ugh, that's a tough one. But as I said, we ask the additional question at the end of the survey to determine, now that you've kind of heard everything, would you be supportive or not? And I'll just do that. We then asked different tax rate questions because we didn't know how they'd respond to the 30 or 35. So, we said, what about $25? A lot stronger support with 25. So, 56% yes, 12% no difference, bonds yes, 4% don't know, 4% no difference, bond no, 24% no. $19, clearly a lot more support. Okay? As I said, if you have support at 30, you're going to have support if it's taxed at the lower. So, strong support for the tax rate. Since we didn't know how they'd respond to those questions, we said, well, what about the tax rate extension? I don't know if you remember how we discussed this. Tax rate falls off in a couple of years, this one just replaces it. Okay? We had 59% of the voters said, yeah. 14% said no difference, bond yes, 11% don't know, 5% no difference, bond no, 30% no. All right. So, now, we told them about the projects, told them about, there's a cost. They have a feel for what we're talking about now. So, now that you've heard some additional information regarding the proposed bond measure, projects and costs, if the election were held today, would you vote yes or no? 68% said yes, 8.3% lean yes, 7.3% undecided, 3.3% lean no, 14% have no. So, good news is, when you actually educated the community, told them that it was going to, told them that it wasn't going to cost as much as maybe some people thought it was, you actually gained a lot more voter support, which is, this is the direction you want to see it go. It's sometimes bad when you give them information and then you drop five percentage points. You're like, wow, remember, we educate our community, we lose support. Right? Or sometimes, wow, it is a really tax-sensitive community. We need to be very careful when we're determining what's the appropriate tax rate. Okay? That's great news. Page 14. I apologize if I'm speaking too fast. I just got, we got, there's a lot of information in this thing.
You're good.
Okay. Then, we asked, just so you guys are aware, the high school district is also considering doing a school improvement bond measure for voters in your community. If the election were held today and both measures were on the ballot, how would you vote? And so, 59% of the voters said I'd support both. 11% said just the elementary, 4.5% said just the high school, 11.5% said I don't know, and 14% said I'm going to vote no no matter what. Okay? So, that's great news. So, how you can compare the two is you take both the 59 and you add it to the elementary. So, you say, okay, well, the elementary voters were going to be 69%. And the high school voters, well, 63.5% of the elementary said they'd support it. Okay? So, overall, great news, in my opinion, when it comes to this stuff.
I have a question about...
Yes?
I slightly recall you were also to raise some just in the high school district.
That's coming up. I like the energy tonight. All right, conclusions and recommendation. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Your voters like you. They think you guys are doing a bang-up job. They like the projects. Support increased when you gave them more information. You're above the 55%. A little bit of tax rate sensitivity, but not anything for me that I'd be nervous about. Our recommendation for the elementary is to continue down the path and look to put something on the gene battle. Okay? Questions about the elementary before I jump into the high? It'll go quicker because I don't need to explain what all this stuff was. Okay? So, same thing for the high school district, 39,000 voters. This one actually finished sooner than the elementary. Went from the 8th through the 15th. 4.86% margin of error. Okay? Right direction or wrong direction question. 43% right, 16 wrong, 41% don't know. Okay? How would you rate the quality of education provided by the Petaluma Joint High School District? 10% excellent, 44% good, 14 fair, 28% don't know, 4% poor, very poor. So, once again, great numbers. And of the people we're communicating with here, 42% have no connection to the school. And of the people we're communicating with here, forty-two percent have no connection to the school district. I think it's also worth to note that when we actually did the survey, we wanted to make sure that we kind of, it was represented throughout the district as a whole. So we made sure that we included two hundred of the people that were surveyed were the east part of the school district, which is Wa and Old Doby. One hundred represented Petaluma Elementary, and then the other hundred were the other school districts. On the west side. So that's who we're communicating with. Popularity contest, joking. Teachers, principals, superintendent, flowed the exact same way, exactly what I wanted to see. Good news, people's perception is they like you guys. Property values question, ninety-two percent agreed with that statement. State continues to reduce funding, you think you should do more, eighty-three percent agree with that statement. So a percentage less on property values, I think two percent is higher, a percent higher for that. Bond question. Same thing, different projects in the yellow box as opposed to the elementary. But also, anyone who responded to the elementary didn't participate in this whatsoever. So these are all completely different voters. Nobody got called twice. Sixty-two point eight percent yes, five point eight percent lean yes, eleven percent undecided, one percent lean no, nineteen and a half no. Good. It's great news. Projects. Plumbing, number one. Inadequate electrical systems, two. Outdated HVAC was number three, which is interesting, on the elementary, it was like number six. But for the high school, it was higher. Portable classrooms, number four. Access to computers and modern technology, number five. I'm skipping through, because there's the tricky ones that we asked at the end there. Modernize or renovate classrooms, dressroom and school facilities, strongly supportive. This is one. Upgrade PE fields and facilities for school and community use. You'll see it says SSA, split sample question. And I think I went over this, but I'll refresh it with memory. Split sample means, two hundred voters got this question, the other two hundred got... Fingers dry, hold on, apologize. Upgrade athletic fields and facilities for school and community. So all we did is we just changed the word athletic for PE, and look at the difference of support that you got by changing those two words. I mean, you went from seventy-something support when you phrased it as athletic, and then it went down to like sixty-two. And once again, that orange and the green is a lot stronger. So it just tells you how to communicate with your voters when it comes to talking about that project. One of those, construct additional classrooms, dressroom and school facilities, strongly supportive. Construct a performing arts theater for school and community use, surprisingly, strongly supportive. I told your superintendent, I thought that one would be at the bottom of the list. I was dead wrong. Glad I didn't bet. Renovate existing pool for school and communities, that's another split sample. And the other question was, construct a new pool for school and community use. So as you said, your voters said, we prefer renovate, but actually, the other two hundred said, I'm okay with actually constructing a new one. It's not your strongest-supported project. You know, you're not gonna run your campaign on something like this. But as I said, it is strongly supported, and it's not, you know, as I said, that thirty-five percent, forty percent, your voters don't wanna do it. Page twenty-five, sorry this is long. Another split sample, tricky, tricky project is, you guys had that COP on the books, the loan was taken out back in the days. And so, there's two ways to ask that question. One is, pay off a district loan, that went to construct a modern school facilities, supported over sixty percent. Or the bottom one at the list, purchase school facilities the district is currently leasing. Which is, as I, when I explained this to the superintendent, normally, those are completely swapped the other way around. Normally, people would rather hear leasing, rather than just pay off a district loan, but your community wanted to see it that way. We won over athletic fields, won over the pool, acquired land and constructed additional classroom, dressroom, and school facilities. That's at like forty, or maybe fifty percent support. Yet a lot of voters said, eh, makes no difference, or don't know. It's not disliked so much, where I'd say, take it off the list. Questions on those before I start talking about money? Excellent. Thirty-five dollars per one hundred thousand assessed valuation, forty-seven percent said yes, eight percent said no difference, yes, five percent don't know, three percent no difference, no, thirty-seven percent less likely. So that's a fifty-five percent, that's, that's, that's good, I would recommend that. But as I said, I don't think you need to generate thirty-five dollars. What about thirty dollars, forty-eight percent yes, eight percent no difference, bond yes, seven percent don't know, three percent no difference, bond no, thirty-four percent. You'll see that you actually gained an extra percent on the much more likely, and you dropped three percent on people who said less likely when you dropped it to thirty dollars. Big jump when you go from thirty to twenty-five. Fifty-six percent said more likely, yes, eight percent no difference, bond yes, six percent don't know, three percent no difference, bond no, twenty-seven percent said less likely. It's kind of, I think, when you go from thirty to twenty-five, or just thirty to twenty, anything, you kind of get into that like twenty-nine, ninety-nine, you know, when you go to the store. It works, obviously, I fall for it in time. Nineteen dollars, obviously a gigantic jump, sixty-two percent yes, seven percent no difference, bond yes, seven percent don't know, three percent no difference, bond no, twenty-one percent no. So I think your sweet spot is in between twenty-five and thirty dollars for the high school district. Now that you've heard more information regarding the proposed bond, projects and costs, if the election were held today, would you vote yes or no? Sixty-three and a half, yes, seven point two lean yes, nine point three undecided, two point eight lean no, seventeen point three no. So once again, you actually increase voter support, which is what you want to see when you do this type of stuff. Conclusions, recommendations. Voters like you, they think you guys are doing a good job, they like the projects, the tax rate's acceptable. I mean, nobody's jumping up and down to, you know, raise their taxes, but as I said, it's not, it's acceptable. Our recommendation again, continue to, you know, assess the community, and plan on placing something on June unless something in the next month says no. Questions?
I do, I do. What, statistically, it's one thing for a telephone caller to say yes, that's another thing for the lever, to say yes. What do you see as a deviance statistically on that?
I mean, it's, every survey for school bonds or partial taxes are done by the phone. It's normally the most accurate, because it's just a gut reaction. All of our surveys in Sonoma County have been within this margin of error. So I think it's, it's pretty accurate, but I, what do you mean the lever?
Well, what I was saying is, when they actually go to vote, will you call me and ask me these questions? And say, yeah, that's because I'm not putting, would you gamble a hundred bucks? Oh, yeah, then I have to put the hundred bucks, that's a whole different story. So my point is, have you done the analysis to follow up when you've done these, and then statistically, how accurate were you?
No, yeah, they're all within our margin of error.
No, not the margin of error, when you actually have the voting, when you do the analysis, at the end of the day, you're saying it's four point four, six percent deviation?
Yes.
Pull levers to this?
Yes. Every one that we've done.
Every one that you've done has been within the sample standard?
Every single one we've done in Sonoma County has been within exactly where that margin of error's been.
Wait, it's fifty percent?
Fifty-five percent.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five percent.
So Steve, we have this as an agenda, hide and down the road here?
Yeah, and so, later in the agenda, we're asking the board to agree to...
A contract.
A contract, where we will put together a resolution for board consideration in the second meeting in December.
Which is where we would make decisions based upon...
We will bring back the proposed list, and what we're planning on doing with the funds, and lay out, basically, the bond program that we would ask the voters to approve in January.
Well then, let's tackle all that when we get to that, the business services. If you have a question about this presentation?
You made a recommendation of putting the elementary portion of it on the twenty-fourteen ballot? But not the high school?
Oh, no, I'm saying put both. Sorry, I didn't say that, I apologize. I said, I put both of them on the June ballot, two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
That's the last item on.
They would be two separate?
Yeah, two, it'd be probably measure A and measure B.
Right, because some of us would get both and some...
Oh, you're right.
Because if you're only in the high school district, you're only gonna have one of those measures.
Yeah, measure A and measure B, they'll both have different projects, different tax rates, different, different everything.
Alright, well, let's tackle that when we get to the business services. You have any questions there? I'm gonna need to fill up, you probably have something that you need to do to set up, so we'll take about a minute, and then we'll go to public comment. Everybody back? Okay, so we have public comment. I'm not gonna read the litany of rules and regulations, because we all know them. And we've got five minutes, and when you're ready?
Great, I hold in my hand the summary of California Public Records Act of two thousand and four. This is actually what I used to make California Public Records Acts request. I made them properly on January eighth, January ninth, and January fourteenth. The Petaluma City School District is in violation of California law, and has been so for the last two weeks, and they are also violating it today, all day. I sent a letter, an email to all the board members, and because to Jane Escobedo, because at that time, I was asking for assistance properly by the California law. It says specifically, the agent must, agency, PCSD, must provide assistance by helping to identify records and information relevant to their request, suggesting ways to overcome any practical basis for denying access. This system is broken. I need to get my hands on public information in order to analyze it, in order to give you good analysis to make the decisions. When the district blocks my access to these records, that process is broken. That process was blocked all day today. I reported it, starting at noon, I reported it throughout the afternoon, I have it documented. Mr. Cole spent about thirty seconds with me and walked away. He was not willing to engage in the conversation to assist me. Jane Escobedo provided about two minutes of this, this is, I appreciate that. She shared with me that the AMS.net people actually did a walkthrough, because I was seeking, how do they know, what was the right number of routers to put into the school? What are they using as a basis? And they really couldn't provide much information, yet they show up with a plan and present it to everybody. So you're telling me that that did not exist today? That they didn't have a chance to share that with me today? Well, of course they did. And so the point is, it is a violation of California law. Second violation, there are existing installations already in the schools. The installations are there, they are operating. There is no knowledge of anybody about, how much radiation do they give off? We've asked for months to have it done, he was supposed to do it in July. He screwed up, he ordered a magnetic field study by mistake, and nobody thought that was a big deal. Not an RF study, a magnetic field study. So he did not see, in the two schools that we were trying to choose, he did not. We had no information of whether they were safe or not safe. I made California Public Records requests over the summer, I was illegally denied. I actually made another request for this reading, and I was granted access to Valley Vista to make the measurement. And that is a precedent, that is a precedent of getting access in response to a California Public Records request. I'm asking for exactly the same thing for all the other schools right now, and I have been illegally denied. We need this information. There's no sense going to the weasel position to say, oh, a record is different than information, because a record lives as a piece of paper, a file, and information is different from that, so we don't have to give it to you, because we don't have it. This is a bunch of crap, folks, and they can't answer our direct question? Oh, no, we can't ask a direct question from a California Records request? It's a little cat and mouse game. How many records are we gonna give them or not give him? What is the thing? What's the least amount we can give in order to fulfill the request? The records I got today were pitiful, absolutely pitiful, so incomplete, it was ridiculous. It was all being documented. It means that every single principal in the school district is violating California law. Steve Bowman is violating California law. Jane Escobedo is violating California law. Michael Cole is violating California law. They are blocking access to properly requested California records. This has to stop, or it will be stopped in court. Because that is the only thing that it seems I can do to get some cooperation here, to get the records in our hands, so we can do the work to analyze, so you can make better decisions. It's all in advance for that. Why is this important? It is important, because people need to learn. This is a book, Disconnect, written by a Nobel Prize-winning author. And three of you have had this book, I have no idea whether you read it tonight. Did the two of you bring your copies tonight, I hope? Did you, Michael, bring your copy?
No, you sent me an email, mine's at home, so...
Okay, no worries. If you could hand that to Mary, that would be great. I would love Mary for you to read this book. Phoebe's already read it, I will get a copy for you, Troy.
I will give my copy to Troy.
Okay, that'd be great. And this is a very, very smart woman. She worked with Al Gore, and she came here and spoke in San Francisco on December ninth.
...a further discussion about how the debate has often been framed as to, do we have the body count yet?
You're pretty close.
And how the debate has been about brain cancer? Do we have enough proof of brain cancer? That's the wrong question. We are conducting an experiment right now, on all of ourselves and our children, and my grandchildren. We're conducting an experiment precisely because we do not have data on safety. It never was obtained. And rather than debating whether we have definitive proof of harm, we should be asking, is there sufficient evidence to be...
Thank you. Thank you. So may I get some cooperation to get the records? That's my question of the board. You directed them to do it back in the summertime, I'm asking you to direct them again. Can you do that, please? Thank you. We're done. I wanna talk to Mr. Bowman about that, I will do that on my time, with Mr. Bowman. Thank you. Next up is... Chad, since you are a regular guest, could you give us your last name and address?
Yeah, oh, sorry, my name's Chad Nathanson, and you need my address? You said you need my address? That's at ten, you need a... Okay, all right, ten fifty-seven. Eli Bolward, so it's E-L-I.
Thank you.
And I think I already came back and talked to you guys, I think it was about last month, about the track. On basically, I just wanted to come back and kind of like, make sure that, you know, the track... Oh, I'm sorry, let me introduce myself, I'm Chad Nathanson, from Cosco County High School, I'm on the track team and the cross-country team. I wanted to come back and just reassure that, you know, the high school, getting an all-weather track is still, you know, in the bond, and it's still an important thing. I wanted to make sure, like, as you guys know, it's the only public high school in Sonoma, Amory County, without an all-weather track. We haven't had a home meet in six years due to the fact the facility's out of code, and it's not safe for athletes to compete on. I just also wanted to check in, because I've heard there is a two million dollar bond out there for the track, because there's certain things, they need a new football field. That's what I was hearing. I came for the all-weather track, but I've heard that from some people, they said there's a bond, about two million dollars to get the football field redone, new bathrooms, and new home stands. That's what I've heard. I'm five, we want the all-weather track, but that's included, that's included. Basically, we have sixty-four thousand dollars as of right now. That's took us six years to raise. The goal, just for the all-weather track, which we want more than the football field, just saying. It's eight hundred thousand dollars.
Hey, I don't see any football players here.
Yeah, exactly, that's right.
Person in the doorway?
Yeah, that's right. So basically, it's eight hundred thousand dollars, which you guys already know. Yeah, so I wanted to check in and make sure that, you know, like you guys knew. And then, one more quick thing I wanted to go over is, basically, whatever you guys can help us out with, we respect and we really do appreciate it. I'm gonna do on my part what I can, so for other reasons, if there's more stuff in the desert that needs to be funded, and that's important also, but I'm doing my part to get how much money we can. So as of right now, this guy named Sandy Well, he was a co-author at Citibank, he lives in Sonoma County. He moved back from New York, Time magazine named him one of the top twenty people to make the market crash on Wall Street. He's donated over twelve million dollars to Sonoma State. He donated over three million dollars back to the Sonoma State Valley Hospital to get their emergency room done. He's a big supporter, we tried contacting him, seeing if he was willing to donate towards the track. So I am doing my part, we also are selling bricks, which I had flyers, if you guys want more. So we are getting our money to get it. We just, we just wanna make sure that it's foreign, that all the track is funded, along with the fact that new bathrooms are gonna be needed, there is gonna be other stuff that's gonna be funded. So if you guys can fund the track, we'll try to fund whatever we can. I just wanted to appreciate you guys for being very supportive of the community and helping us get that all the way to track, so I just wanted to thank you guys. Thank you. Thank you.
A long wait. They didn't wait so long?
Oh, yeah, of course, no problem. Yeah, thank you guys very much.
Do you mind if Mr. Jackson back here, if that...
Yes, yeah, he's a reporter, right?
Well, yeah, I'll get to Jack.
Oh, thank you.
You should sit right next to him for the rest of the week.[1727.82]
We go to Adam J., reporting activities, corresponds to school board members. We had adult education graduation last night.
It was delightful, it was a large class and great attendance. It was at Valium Vista, they couldn't have been in here. Yeah, it was a stage and everything, very exciting.
Well, thank you very much for going to that. We also did a, last night was a busy night, so we did changes in law of K through 12 with the good folks at SCUP, which was two hours of pretty interesting, being the only non-attorney in attendance, it was pretty interesting, so. A lot of good stuff. PJHS basketball games, announcing the varsity girls' basketball games at home high school. Anybody have anything else to add to that, or no? So, let's go to the consent agenda. I know we pulled one item, but forgetting that item, I'll take a motion.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes? Five oh, pursue. Let's move on to, we have nothing in administrative human resources, right?
Yeah.
What?
Oh, sorry, I was on business services.
Okay, so going down to business services, how about item six? Purchase orders, we have a list of purchase orders. The recommended motions to board approve list of purchase orders in accordance with board policy 3314. We do this so we can make sure that any conflicts of interest. Got a second? Do I?
Yes, sure.
Do I have anybody that has a need to not participate in this?
Me. I have to abstain.
I might have to abstain as well. I do have to abstain.
All right, so I'm going to assume for business, personal business purposes, we have to abstain, is that correct?
Mine's for potential client.
Okay.
Mine, sorry, is might be based on information I listened to this evening about, I mean, it was previously voted on item, I just, I don't know.
What's that? I'm sorry?
I'm probably not making myself clear.
It's okay, so we're talking about purchase orders.
Purchase order, board report? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, purchase order item, yes.
So P1401267, educational services?
Okay.
So I abstain.
You can abstain if you have a personal business reason to abstain, otherwise you are, by board policy, greatly encouraged to vote.
Oh, got it, okay.
So you've got a personal business thing going on? So it's not a personal business item?
No.
Okay, Steve, I'm correct on that, correct, thank you. All right, so we got a motion and a second, all those in favor of the purchase order?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, all do I?
Abstain, I'm not opposing, okay. So we got a four oh and one. So you got that? I think I made that a lot more complicated than I had, and I apologize for that. No, no, that's on me. List of expenditures, item seven, so same deal. Looking for a motion, and I got a motion ratified. Second over here? All right, do I have anybody that's got issues on expenditures? Maybe a second. For those of you at home, you got to remember it's a small town, that a lot of us are obviously in business in this town. And so if there's something that's on the agenda that is a customer, if you have a financial interest, we ask on the purchase orders and expenditures that that board member refuses to solve, abstain by it, so. You going to abstain again? Ten, ten, over here? You're good? Okay, so we got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstain. Four oh and one. Moving on to, that was what, business six?
Seven, you're on eight.
I'm on a four-year agreement renewal authorization between First Student and Pendleton City Schools for Special Education School Bus Transportation Services. The recommended motions to the board to authorize a four-year agreement renewal between First Student and Pendleton City Schools for Special Education School Bus Transport Services.
Second.
Steve, Laura Midge?
Yes. This is an extension of an existing agreement. They assist us in covering routes for special education that we are not able to do with our own school bus services. And they're pretty much on an as-needed basis, so we can use them as much or as little as we need.
All right, is it fair to say that they pick up the overflow that we cannot service internally?
Yes, that is correct.
Do I have any public comment on this?
Okay, I have a comment on it, maybe it's just lawyering.
I think you used your comments up.
Couple of comments, no, there's one left. I found it kind of curious that there wasn't an attorney's fees clause in here. And the reason I say that is because we're asking them to do a lot of fairly esoteric performance, but our only obligation is to pay. So the odds are that we would maybe have to take action against them to get them to perform or to make good on something that they would do. Their only recourse for us is if we pay, that's all we have to do, right? As I understand it, so chances are we're not going to, you know, the attorney's fees clause wouldn't be invoked against us. So it's something you may just want to put in there to safeguard us.
Does anybody have any comments regarding that? Are we concerned about executing this agreement, or is this a go-forward thing?
That was just a suggestion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That one goes five oh, so. Okay, let's go to item nine. Agreement authorization for ISOM? Is that how I properly say it? ISE, advisors. And the recommended motions for board to approve the agreement for bond services. I'll take a motion and a second and some discussion. Anybody?
Second.
So you want to present that real quick, Steve, and then Laura Midge, and then answer questions, where?
Just, so we've presented the findings, we believe that findings are favorable and that we should go on the June ballot. So this time, we're asking for an agreement to prepare the resolution for board consideration in February and hiring ISOM advisors to prepare that on behalf of the district.
So based upon that, are we, because we need to digest this to try to determine whether or not there's a dollar amount, what that dollar amount might be, right? Are we committed today? Or are you asking this by this agreement, or are we saying we're going out for a while?
No, you'll commit when you pass the resolution at the next meeting. So at the next meeting, we'll spell out all the details that we're asking you to approve for the June ballot.
And then?
And at that time, we're going to make a recommendation, as we always do. And you can, wordsmith it or modify it if you have concerns relative to the recommendation for the ballot measure or the resolution itself.
Right, and this contract is contingent upon us, A, approving that, as well as then the fees paid depending upon actually passing and selling bonds, right?
Correct.
So you're free before, theoretically.
You're right. Performance-based.
All right, well, that was all the question I had, then, absolutely. I mean, we've got groundwork, we need to get going, we're doing this, right? So good start to do it. That was the only question, anybody else have any other questions?
My question is how are these fees compared to when we did this over 20 years ago? I mean, obviously, certainly more, but I'm just curious.
Very competitive.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to say.
In that regards.
Well, I mean, along with the Wilson School kindergarten ad I got in the mailer, maybe there's a coupon in there that I could look for. I'll go back through and check again.
Check that, see if there's some financial items.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to item 10. This is AT&amp;T Capital Services, Inc. Recommend a motion that the board approve the agreement in the system for purchase and lease of Chromebooks. I'll take a motion. Comments? We'll get there.
Second.
So the way this works is we go motion, second, they tell us what's going on, we open it up for comment, and we come back here. So we got a motion and a second? Who wants them?
Okay, so this is the same item that we had at the last board meeting, and we confirmed a few things. The pricing in this lease-purchase agreement is based on the Samsung Chromebooks. However, we do have the ability to look at either new or different devices as they become available or they're deemed to be a better product. There's significant discount involved with purchase, doing this purchase in this manner. About a 30% discount on the devices. And then the service provided to white glove and prepare them for actual use is huge because we do not have the staff to manually deal with this volume of devices that we need to purchase.
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner. So, anyway, we had addressed and ensured that we had the flexibility in this agreement that the board was looking for at the last time.
This was an item that was pulled from the last agenda.
Yes.
It was continued, as you say correctly. All right, so I will open it up to questions of staff.
I have no questions.
Where does it say we have the right? In that agreement, where does it say that we have the right to, to basically shop other brands or? I just didn't see, because when I looked, it still has this attachment that 775 units bundled pricing solution overview, still have the Samsung Series 3 Chromebook. I mean, that may be the best deal, I don't know, I'm not pricing things, nor am I going to.
Let me get to the attachment.
I just, I just like to see it in there.
No, I requested that it be in there. Again, the pricing was based on that, but if you look at the description, it no longer says Samsung Chromebooks. It's student computing devices.
Yeah, I got that, I saw that change. But then it was a little attachment, but I didn't know what the relevance to that was.
Right, just that that's what they.
That's just the suggestion at this point in time?
Yeah, that's the cost if we purchase the Samsung.
Okay, then.
Without limit to.
Okay, then I have a question on the notes that's in the blue type on the face page there, Midge, on the master agreement, I guess, that says, "Notes, Lassie understands that the quote 'equipment' described above is not eligible for reimbursement under the Schools and Library Program, i.e. the E-Rate."
Right, the equipment is not, the actual device is not, but services that you may use are eratable. So that's just.
So E-Rate isn't helping out at all with the?
No, not with that, but.
With the equipment?
Right, for any cellular or wireless type Wi-Fi, you do receive the E-Rate discounts.
Okay, questions, darling?
No. Did I just, did we specifically research the Acer Chromebook that was brought up?
Yes.
Yes, we have. And I think Lori has some information on that.
The bus driver.
No, we have researched the Acer and the Chromebooks. I mean, at this point, we are using Samsung primarily. We don't have any Asers out in the classrooms at this point. But there's pros and cons with any device that you use. And basically, the reason that we ended up buying Samsung to begin with is, one was for the fact that they were lighter than the Asers. They have the ARM processor, so they are cooler. They have a longer battery life than the Asers as well. However, the Asers do have a removable battery that could be replaced long-term. The Asers also are faster, however, the battery doesn't last as long. So either side, you're going to have pros and cons. We have deployed about 500 Samsung devices at this point. We have not had any trouble with those devices at this time. Nor have we had any but maybe three or four break at this point out of the 500. So the longer battery life is really kind of a big seller for us so that it can last throughout the school day for its usage. So.
Other questions?
Because this is a lease, warranty is really a factor, right? Because this is a lease, warranties really aren't a factor, I mean, they're taking care of all it. I mean, if something breaks, how's it working? Do they take it back and just give us a new one, plug it in, as long as we didn't destroy it?
Well, if it's, right, if we drop it and break it, it's not under warranty. But if you have some problem, yeah, so those were all accidental droppage, the ones that were broken. So yes, we would have a warranty at that point.
All right, I will open up the public comment. I know one, do I have two? I have one, all right?
I'm very surprised that there's no change. I don't get it. The whole point being here that. I, great. So we brought this up last week, Jane and Midge, and the point was to negotiate a better price for the Acer because the Samsung started at $240, and you negotiate down to $199. And the Acer starts at $199, so you could negotiate better than that. I think you could probably get to $160 or something. So I guess my point is, the whole point that I brought up was that none of these devices are going to be safe unless you also buy the pluggable USB 2.0 to Ethernet wired adapter. If you are not purchasing that, you are purchasing a very dangerous item for these students to use. The light speed, I have no idea what it is, no one's ever really explained it to me. But I'll tell you this much, I own an Acer just like she does. It takes nothing to set it up. There's no reason to have any other kinds of security because you already have network security going for your school network. There's no reason to extend that to home. That is for $15,000. You actually better, should better spend that money, $12,000, in order to get these USB adapters. If you buy a single device without a USB adapter, you are sentencing your students to dangerous wireless signals that they do not need for their health and well-being. And we will finish what Deborah Davis has to tell us about it. As soon as I get her body mail.
I think after you hear our presentation today, you will say yes. I'm going to briefly talk to you about some of the experiments that have been done with human sperm. Sperm have the virtue of being readily available, and it takes about half a billion to make a healthy child. That's because you want the healthiest sperm to succeed in fertilizing the egg. These studies I'm going to show you took sperm from healthy men. One test tube did not get exposed to cellphone radiation, and the other did. And what the results were were quite stunning. Sperm exposed to cellphone radiation died three times faster, three times faster. And in terms of a measure of damage on their mitochondria, had three times more damage to the mitochondrial DNA.
Important to note mitochondrial DNA, very, very important because it's spoken of in this video as well. Let's hear what Barry Traor has to say.
Wi-Fi, I think anyone who puts Wi-Fi into a school should be locked up for the rest of their life. I really do. I think they're not fit to walk on the surface of this planet because they haven't looked at the research and whatever incentive they have, it is not worth the genetic problems that parents are going to face with their children when they're born. And if you think of a single parent, a mother, who has a genetically deformed child, that that particular mother will feel guilty because she gave birth. She will feel guilty and she will be worried. Everything that have reproductive cycles of a year or two years or three years, we're already seeing this, and it has been published by veterinary schools and vets and scientists. So we know this happens. And it's also been documented in the Cold War when women were deliberately microwaved. So we know it does happen, the documents are there. And what you're risking by putting Wi-Fi into schools is the future generations of all of these girls. But it gets worse because this particular DNA, the mitochondrial DNA inside you, and the DNA inside you, the mitochondrial DNA, you can trace unchanged to your mother, her mother.
The key point here is mitochondrial DNA is passed on from generation to generation once you damage it. That means if Wi-Fi signal damages the ovaries in these young girls who are born with all of the eggs they're going to get at birth, they haven't at five and six years old, you put a Wi-Fi device in front of them, you are potentially damaging all of those eggs, and that will be passed on to future generations. We see it in mice already. We've seen it in the Cold War because Wi-Fi was used as a weapon in the Cold War at the same levels that we put them into our classrooms. You need to know this information for you to make better choices about how we connect our Chromebooks with our students. The USB to Ethernet adapters are critical for the safe operation of any Chromebook. To leave that off of this would be irresponsible. You should not vote this item up unless an inclusive Ethernet adapter, you don't need the light speed.
All right. Any questions, comments concerning? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, there's been discussion. There's been discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Five oh. All right, moving on to the discussion item of number 11, financial reports. Does anybody have any discussion that they want to have on the discussion item of financial reports? Okay. Educational services, I'm looking through here, and I'm not seeing...
We held it.
Oh, wait, excuse me.
He held it. He held over. He held over.
And one is held over. So item one is after-school safety and enrichment. The ACs grant application approval for McKinley Elementary School. The recommendations for the board to approve that. I'll take a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Did you want me to ask or say why I wanted to hold it? Well, I was looking at these, and I was a little confused because the numbers and the students in there was adding... Anyway, so I wanted just a brief synopsis of what it is and how it can benefit our kids.
Right. So the ACs program is the after-school education... Oh, great, I don't know what the acronym is. But it was, remember the proposition that Ernst Schwarzenegger passed a couple of years ago while he was governor? And this is the result of that proposition. And it provides after-school programs to schools that have high levels of kids, students who are socio-economically disadvantaged. So both McKinley and McDowell School are involved in this. We currently have grants and are working in collaboration in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club at the two schools. It is a very structured program where the kids are there from wherever after school, whatever time school gets out until 6 o'clock. They are provided snacks. They get some PE. They get some homework help, some academic support, and then some downtime also. They... We are asking, McKinley is actually asking for an increase because we had to take a voluntary decrease just because of attendance numbers, and we have the attendance back up at that site now, so we're asking for an increase there. We're asking for McDowell to be, it's their three-year, it's a three-year cycle, and we have to re-up. So we're asking for another three years of the ACs program at McDowell. And Kennelworth has not been a participant in the program, but we decided to take a chance. Their free and reduced lunch rate is around 40%, and it's unlikely that we'll get funded,